So, just so you know we're recording. But yeah, they had this bad. Ninety-one years, Tampa Bay hadn't been hit since nineteen thirty.
Wow.
Yeah.
And they'll have to come back. Wow.
That's crazy. Okay. Welcome to the Tuesday, October first, twenty twenty-four, uh, regular city council meeting. Uh, please stand with me to, for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please, Misty.
Morris.
Here.
Weir.
Yes.
Smack.
Clements.
Here.
Dewar.
Here.
Okay, we have Maggie Berger with us tonight for the, oh, let's approve the agenda.
Good idea.
Number four, approval of the October first, twenty twenty-four agenda. I'll take a motion to approve, please.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Now, Lady Maggie Berger with Spear Financial to present the TIF report.
Wonderful. Thank you very much for having me, Mayor Maggie Berger with Spear Financial.
You bet.
We have laid in front of you, and I also believe it is in your council packet this evening, as I've done my research online for the agenda this at, this evening. Um, what we have got, we're gonna just go through this quickly. I remind you, our red pages outline the general obligation debt that the city has outstanding. We have a couple pages of general obligation debt, your most recent debt being issued on page two. That was done this year. Um, that general obligation debt, um, was in the amount of two million fifteen thousand dollars. Um, we've got that listed there. We've got your principal and interest in that box. We show what date it was issued or what date it closed. We also show you the TIC, which is the true interest cost. And then down below, you can see in this one, after, uh, June first, twenty thirty-two, we've, we've drawn a line under that principal amount of one hundred and forty thousand dollars. That is when that bond becomes callable. So that just means, at that time, if interest rates are lower than the three point nine percent interest rate, you would be able to refinance that, you'd be able to pay it off at that time, you'd be able to pay down on the loan at that time. If interest rates are higher at that time, if the call is only at your option, you just continue to pay as the debt service schedule, um, is outstanding, and it would be at that date or any date after that date that you would be able to call those bonds in. We give you the total principal, the total principal and interest, and then the city is not levying any debt service levy in that far corner. You are using TIF revenue for some of your debt, you're using some water revenues, um, for also, uh, for parts of, uh, the twenty fifteen, twenty sixteen, and twenty seventeen debts that are outstanding. Uh, we go onto our orange page, and this outlines the revenue debt that the city has outstanding. This revenue debt is in an amount of nine million eight hundred fifty-five thousand. This was, uh, set, uh, up with the SRF, the Sewer Revenue SRF Loan Program. It has an interest rate of two percent on it. I don't believe you've fully drawn on this project. Is that correct? It's still preliminary, so this is our debt service schedule as it stands today. Once you have fully drawn and that project is completed, we'll know if you drew less than the nine million, um, eight hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars that you had planned to draw on. Um, but again, with the accumulation of cash, there could be some change orders. There was a large contingency built into that application. All of those things could mean that you end up borrowing less. And when you borrow less, obviously, the debt payment will change. So we'll monitor that. Biggest takeaway from this page is that on the far right there, total property taxes, that's a zero all the way down. You cannot levy property taxes for this type of debt because you took this debt out as a revenue debt. This is not general obligation. You have to pay it with the revenue, the system, and you have to keep the revenues in a place that they're, um, well off enough to not only pay the operating expenses, but also to pay that debt service payment, so.
And since, if you don't mind if I interrupt just briefly here, and since we're on the wastewater treatment plant revenue bond, um, we did, uh, find out this past week, um, that we were, are going to get seven hundred thousand in forgiveness.
Fantastic. So that will lower this, this payment schedule down. Um, at the end of the loan, so how that loan forgiveness works, that's, that's fantastic news. Congratulations to you guys. So how that works is at the end of all of the draws, um, the SRF folks will reach out to myself and to the city, and will say, we've got this seven hundred thousand dollars of loan forgiveness. How do you want that applied? And they will say, do you want it applied so that we pay off some of the final maturities? You know, maybe we pay off the full last maturity and the second to the last part of that one? Or do you want us to take it from each principal amount, meaning that we lower the principal? Either way, it will make the debt service different than whatever the remaining amount was. Um, because if you just pay off the last, let's say, um, it shrinks up the amount of debt that's outstanding. It shrinks up the maturity rate, which ultimately leads to a much lower interest accrual, um, just because you've eliminated that last year. We will then, at that time, do some analysis for you, provide it back to the city so that the city can make that decision, what best works for them. Then at that time, you get to discuss your ordinance and the rates that you have in place. And if you're gonna keep those rates as they are, or if you're gonna adjust those rates accordingly, because you've gotten some loan forgiveness. And again, the loan forgiveness is different from what I just talked about, that maybe there's been change orders in the downward fashion. Maybe you used, you've used some cash, maybe you didn't use all of the contingency. So it maybe is not just the seven hundred thousand that will come off this. You may actually borrow less to begin with anyways, so. Great. That's great to know. Wonderful. Um, and then we go on, and we go to our yellow pages. This is where we outline what TIF district is paying what general obligation debt. Um, and, and so some of those debts, there's a couple of TIF districts involved, right? Sometimes when we issue debt, we're saying, well, part of that debt was for East Heights and part of it was for Northwest and things like that. So this outlines how much of that debt from each of these TIF districts. So on page one, we really show what is from the East Heights District. You're paying, um, that in that tall column there, that's what we transfer into the debt service. Um, at the end of page one, we show for the Northwest District, that goes on to page two as well. And then we have the Home Acres District on page two. And then very last, at the, uh, page three, we show the newer residential district. And that was really according to your twenty, um, fifteen debt that is outstanding. Uh, then we do have some LMI set aside in that purple column. What that means is the twenty fifteen debt, you paid for infrastructure improvements. Um, those infrastructure improvements, because you're collecting TIF and because it's related to, um, residential property, the state says you have to set aside low to moderate income dollars. And those dollars have to be collected out of the TIF receipts and then set aside, and then those dollars can be used in the future for any low to moderate income projects that are going on within your city to help low to moderate income individuals with housing needs. You can use, you can do it with projects in front of homes that are, that meet the low to moderate income standards, um, things like that, so. Uh, probably don't have a lot of LMI cash built up right now, as that new residential area is really just kind of taking shape itself with the houses coming on, because I remind everybody, I build a house today in twenty twenty-four. First time I'm gonna pay taxes is fiscal year twenty-seven on that house. So there's, there's quite a lag there, so there might be a lot of houses built or, or more houses being built. But remember, the dollars associated with those houses aren't gonna come on for two, three more years.
Does the LMI set aside money have to be used in the TIF district that it was created from?
No, and usually, that's, that's a really good question, Sandy. And, and the answer is no, it does not have to be, and typically, it's not spent in that. Because probably the people in that area aren't meeting the LMI standards, which is eighty percent of the median household income. Um, so t, so it just has to be spent within the city limits of the city. And again, it could be spent all at one time, because maybe there's a project that you've identified that really meets the L, LMI standards. Or it could be paid out in, in small twenty-five hundred, five thousand dollar grants towards individual, um, individuals in town who maybe are meeting, um, your program and whatever that program may look like, and, and that program may not be set up yet. Because usually, it doesn't get set up until there's money to be given out, right? Um, and, and so, you know, we've suggested that you, if, if you don't wanna handle it in-house, InterCog is very good at handling LMI, because it is a private thing. No one's probably gonna walk into City Hall and provide their income information, where if they're doing it in an, in a more private situation with a third party, um, it, it becomes a lot easier for you guys to administer. And, and make sure that those dollars are getting spent the way that they should be getting spent.
Yeah, we've had discussion already with InterCog regarding, we thought we'd wait until we got up to like sixty.
Yeah.
So we have like some money in there to spend?
Yeah, because, I mean, when you do open up, um, any kind of a grant program or you start to look, you could spend those dollars pretty quickly. I mean, there, there may be a, a fair amount of people that say, hey, yeah, I'm gonna be eligible for that, and I'm gonna, I'm gonna apply. Because they're gonna give you ideas, but we see anywhere from buying down interest, um, rates on mortgages and buying down closing costs to changing out windows, um, and changing out high efficiency things like furnaces and this and that. And, and so those grants can go a long way, um, for individuals, so. And then we've got our certifications here at the end of page three of the yellow. This just says, to the East Heights District, we're certifying this to the county, Home Acres, we're certifying this. So you're going through all of this tonight, next on your agenda, that all of these certifications, your annual re, urban renewal report is done. Um, and so all of this just gets turned into the county, saying, this is what we're asking for in TIF receipts out of these different areas. We have to designate and separate those out for the different areas, uh, to the county. Then we go on to our green pages, and we look at column number two and read straight down. So fiscal year twenty-five, the city's one hundred percent valuation is three hundred and forty-five thousand, four hundred eighty, uh, three hundred and forty-five million, sorry, four hundred eighty-three thousand eighty-four dollars. That is a significant jump over last year in column number one. It's about a twenty-seven percent increase. If you'll all remember back, about fifteen months ago, you got a nice little letter from the county saying, we're going to raise your valuation, you did nothing, but this is your valuation increase. This green sheet, I remind you, has nothing to do with rollbacks. So although there was a cut in that residential rollback, this is one hundred percent valuation, and it, and it calculates your debt capacity. So at that three hundred and forty-five million dollar number, you have about seventeen million dollars in total debt capacity. You have about five point seven million dollars, uh, at the beginning of the fiscal year, July first, outstanding. You'll pay back principal this year, four hundred and ninety thousand, and since July first, you have issued two million fifteen thousand dollars in new GO bonds. So we add that in, you have remaining capacity of about ten million dollars. We take off that twenty percent contingency, again, just saying, you probably shouldn't issue more than eighty percent of your total debt capacity. If we take that three point four million dollars off, you're at about six point five million dollars. Pretty significant, even over last year, with a two million dollar bond issued done. And, and that really, um, we're happy to see that. I know that the city has had to spend some money on some projects to get some growth going. Um, and so we're really happy to see that you're back in that six point five million dollar range for debt capacity as, as you move forward, so. This goes on for a couple of pages. We have been told, um, that they anticipate, you know, we knew twenty-four was a very flat year in growth, and twenty-five, we've been told, will probably be a pretty flat year. The only type of growth that you're probably gonna see is growth that is naturally occurring, like people are building something new. There's new houses, new commercial, new industrial. Um, likely, you're not gonna see increases, we've been told, on your home's existing value, if you've done nothing to it, so. And then we go on to our blue pages. I'm gonna go through the East Heights. You've got multiple, um, sets of blue pages. They're each two pages long. So the East Heights, um, is our first two pages. Again, we'll look at column number two and read straight down. This is the area where we talk about, you know, if this podium was the original East Heights TIF district, this is the amount of increment or taxable valuation that has grown in that district from, from its original inception. So we've got about twelve million dollars of growth in commercial. Um, we don't have any industrial, no personal property or ag. And then we've got about sixty-four million dollars in residential. Now, that looks significant compared to column number one. Part of that growth is that valuation increase. But part of it also, I'll remind you, is multi-residential in this fiscal year has rolled into residential. So you probably had some multi-residential, um, valuation in the past. It is now part of that residential, um, uh, valuation, and, and, and that multi-residential has just gone away. This gives you about forty million dollars of taxable increment. We take that times the TIF tax rate of twenty-six dollars and twenty-two cents. It produces about one million sixty-nine thousand dollars of receipts, and you're using about a hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars, um, in your general obligation, um, commitments in twenty-five. Now, in twenty-six, that number goes up a little bit more, um, and part of that is some of this new debt that was issued. That area sits in that, that commercial area, and so you are seeing new debt coming on. But we also anticipate with the new debt that's come on, there will be new valuation in the two to three years to come, based on what you have going on right now in that area. So, again, sometimes you're spending money to make the money happen in the area, because you've gotta get the infrastructure in. You've gotta do, uh, what is necessary to get those commercial businesses, um, up and rolling. So we go on, uh, again, there was fourteen percent growth in East Heights District. Again, we go through, and they're labeled at the top of everyone. We have the Northwest District. Um, we also then have the Home Acres area, and then again, that very last section for the last two pages is your housing, TIF district. I do wanna point out, that has grown fairly significantly. We went from about five million dollars of growth of, of residential increment to about sixteen million dollars of residential increment. So, again, part of that is just that valuation increase. Even if you had a new home, you were noticing that valuation increase. But also, um, new homes being built in that area has led to that valuation increase. I would answer any questions that you guys have before you take action on your next resolution items on your resolution calendar.
You do a very good job of explaining a difficult subject.
Thank you. I try to keep it as.
It's always nice and refreshing.
As plain as possible, because I know that this is what geeks me out.
Right.
But you all, this is not your favorite subject, I am sure. Um, and so, yeah, thank you very much. I appreciate that. Great. Well, I will wait till you get through those next few resolutions. Thank you.
Thank you, Maggie.
Thank you.
Item six is public comment. Okay. Item seven, approval of the consent agenda. I'll take a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Number eight is approval of the resolution calendar. Take a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
And that'll be a roll call, please.
Morris.
Yes.
Weir.
Yes.
Clements.
Yes.
And Dewar.
Yes.
Excellent. Thank you, Maggie.
Thank you, guys.
You too. Number nine, request to approve updated agreement with Terricon for the material testing services for the wastewater treatment plant rehabilitation, um, in the amount from forty-three thousand ninety-eight dollars to forty-five thousand nine hundred and eighty-seven, for a total increase of two thousand eight hundred and eighty-nine. Um, actually, Sandy had asked me, um, what, how, why are the increase in that? Um, we did like four change orders for the wastewater treatment plant project, and two of them were, um, testing items. So one of them was the Weir, uh, I'm sorry, the manhole that they had to raise up, so they have to use concrete for that. And the other one was that staircase that, um, they were gonna modify and pour concrete there. Um, and I just, I think there was just some additional stuff that, that, um, you know, went a little long, so. Any questions?
I don't think so.
I'll take a motion to approve then.
Motion to approve?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Item ten, request to approve replacement of front doors east side at City Hall in the amount of five thousand nine hundred and seventy-five dollars with, um, lighted glass as budgeted for FY twenty-five. Um, the doors that are there currently, um, uh, actually came from Jewett School. Um, and they've been there since twenty, I wanna say twenty-ten, twenty-eleven. Um, you could actually stick your pinky right through, um, the door. I don't know if they just weren't, uh, mounted properly or what, but we've been looking to replace those. It took us, um, probably about six months to eight months to get another quote. We're, we're having difficulty in that area, just for a heads up, but.
I just had one question, Deanne.
Yeah.
The proposal date is, um, June twenty-first. I notice here, he says that that price is good for forty-five days. We're beyond that, so it was.
On which one?
Um, I'm sorry, the, uh, base point?
Oh, the base point, yeah. He just actually get, sent that to me in this, last week.
Thank you.
And that's the next item, actually. We're on the replacement of the front doors.
So, and that's, that's like a turnkey operation?
It is. Well, Leidig did the back ones to the library that also had, um, Jewett doors on it.
Yeah.
So, um, they were secondhand doors to begin with, and we've had been having problems, especially with the front ones, not being consistent in the locking department.
What are you doing, the closers and the openers and?
Yeah, and then when we're, as the next item, when we replaced that ancient handicap operator, it's, that's pretty loud and making a lot of noise, 'cause it's, you know, it was nineteen seventies, so.
I know, drive by here sometimes, and the door's stuck open.
Yeah, we're, like I said, we've been having issues for quite some time, but we, it was almost impossible to get another quote, so. Um, but I'll take a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Number eleven, thre, uh, request to replace handicap receptacle for the front doors east side at City Hall with base point in the amount of four thousand is budgeted for FY twenty-five. I actually budgeted thirty-two fifty, um, just to let you all know, um, 'cause that was the original quote that we had received from them. Um, and his explanation was, you know, they just can't get it for what they could. When I got the original quote, I think, uh, well, it's probably been almost a year ago, 'cause it was during budget season.
I move approval of the request for, uh, base point for four thousand dollars.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Uh, number twelve, request to approve cleaning tile floors and carpets in the li, excuse me, in the library in City Hall as coated with professional carpet in the amount of two thousand two hundred and forty-five dollars and twenty cents. And I think I, when I sent the email out to all of you, it's been since twenty-twelve that the floors have been stripped and, and resealed. And they're also gonna do the bathrooms, which I, were, which are ceramic tile. They don't think they have ever been done. I, I don't know if they have, but they're, they're pretty bad. And then they're gonna do all the carpets as well, so. Uh, we had reached out to several other companies, again, um, not real sure, reached out to them again. Um, one of them was, um, not to name any names, I don't need to do that, but I just, I never got any response back.
Gotcha.
So. And I'm, you know, like we discussed earlier, I'm hoping we get quotes on, uh, the CRC.
No. I make a motion to approve that request.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Number thirteen, request from People Service to continue agreement with electric pump for annual maintenance of the lift station pump components in the amount of twenty-five hundred. That actually doesn't expire until November, but they had sent us to us, so I wanted to get it on the agenda right away. Um, they, this just ensures that they're gonna come out and they're gonna do regular, um, test on all of our lift stations, so we don't get any drastic surprises like we've had in the past.
That's worked out pretty good so far.
It has, yeah, and they made some really good recommendations that we've already, um, started to replace some of the pumps, so.
I would make a motion to approve the request. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Uh, number fourteen is request from Mayor to apply for a water quality grant for Angels Park improvements. Um, this is just gonna be the beginning of a, kind of a really big project, um, down at Angels Park. Um, we had talked to, the water quality grant kind of goes hand in hand with our wastewater treatment plant, um, rehabilitation. This is something that's offered to us because we did the SRF loan. Um, we've actually never applied for a water quality grant, so our approval odds are, are very high. Um, they pay for fifty percent, and if you saw by the diagram, you know, kinda, one thing it would help with is the geese issue that we have down at Myers, like, 'cause we're gonna put the native grasses along the shoreline. Um, that was something that D and R, when they went down there, recommended right away. And the other thing is, we have, um, a very low point that, not this year, because, you know, pretty much after June, it hasn't rained, but there's a low point, um, on the north side of the parking lot um, that does tend to breed mosquitoes during a wet season, obviously. Um, the other, the other areas, I don't know if they're necessary, 'cause she had like one through, or he had like one through five. But that, that one on the north side of the parking lot, I think that would be a nice, um, uh, you know, just to help with the drainage and it's a water quality. So water quality grant just stands for that. You're doing something to improve the water quality instead of having staining water. Also, um, with the water quality grant, doing that native grass, so we don't have near the geese is what we do. So then, as another part of that project, we're, we have, uh, like two other, three other, um, places we're gonna reach out, because we'd like to rebuild the, um, and Dix looked at it, but we'd like to rebuild the bathroom down there. Um, we'd like to build two stalls, um, on each side for men and women and have storage there as well. So we're gonna kind of just group all of that into one, um, with the water quality grant and some other, like, lock on and reap. And the other thing is, we're gonna fix the shoreline, because right now, um, individuals are going down there and knocking the shoreline off, um, because it's, has a brick wall, and all those nice bricks are in our water. So, and that's usually a reap grant, and normally, they pay for a hundred percent of the project. So those are all the things that we would like to do down there and, and pretty much need to do down there for, um, the quality, water quality and safety issues.
All right.
And there'll be more, more information to follow. I just wanna, you know, is this guy, you know, is, you guys wanna go after these grants, you know, to help better that park?
Well, if it's something that we can get because of something else we've done, and it's a project that needs to be done anyway, I don't see the harm in applying for it.
Yeah.
Um, if they're gonna throw those tax dollars out there, I mean, might as well use them.
Yeah, I agree.
So I would make a motion to approve the request.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Uh, number fifteen, ordinance seven oh three, admitting provisions pertaining to section one seventy point three, definitions number ten in our first reading. Um, what spurred both of these ordinance, ordinances on is we had, um, a company that had come in, and they wanna start a halfway house. Um, and this is for convicts that just got out of prison, and basically, they could pretty much, the way our ordinance stood, they could pretty much do that, especially in R two. So in, in, um, the definitions, we're tweaking the boarding and, you know, the, what is it? I've got them with me. The boarding and, and rooming house by, if it's, what we're saying is you can have borders and you can have a rooming house. It's gonna be, um, with a predetermined number of days, but it's gonna be a resident family home. So if you want to take in a foreign exchange student, for example, or you wanna take in foster children, for example. or you want to take in foster children, for example, that's, that's going to be allowed as long as you're going to remain in the house. We don't want a company coming in and right next door to your house, I should say, because that's a reality. You know, I mean, some of the statistics on repeat, on repeat crimes, I'm not condoning anyone that wants to do this service. I just don't want it next door. So, we're kind of just, you know, tweaking our ordinances, you know, so that doesn't happen.
Well, so we've had a, a corporate halfway house before, haven't we?
I don't think so.
Over there?
No, um, actually, it wasn't Norma, it was Eldin Court.
Oh, Eldin.
And it was, um, well, at one point, um, the two, three brothers lived there?
Three.
The three brothers lived there and they were just mentally handicapped. And then we had kind of like a, maybe like a pregnancy rehabilit- pregnancy rehabilitation, you think?
I'm not sure. But the, I think the one they're referring to is, is further down on Eldin, that was the group home.
Yeah.
And I know.
It was a standalone home built that way for.
Oh, okay.
Six bedrooms or something like that, six or eight.
Okay. So what we're saying now is, you can do that, but you have to reside there. I don't really think it's a hard ask.
So Planning and Zoning brought this to us?
Um, actually, no. I brought it to Planning and Zoning and then they brought it back to us.
Okay.
They approved it, discussed it, thought it was in the best interest of the city, so. Any thoughts, council?
I can't really see anything against it.
Well, I, I've been just thinking through it, trying to see pros and cons. Um, and obviously you have and, and Planning and Zoning has. So, a lot of eyes have looked at it. It doesn't look like there's any big surprise.
Yeah, I mean.
Yeah, and this, this, this language is actually, um, working with our attorney, city attorney. This isn't just something I came up with because, you know.
Oh, okay.
No, it is the language from the city attorney because there's a lot of rules, especially in code for, uh, four fourteen of the state code that just allows, you know, for you to make, um, something that's not going to be legal in the state of Iowa. So, and when we get to the next one, I'll, you know, share something Sandy and I talked about, so.
I would rather not see that type of, of activity in a residential area. Um, so I, I don't have a problem with the language change. Yeah, I move passage of ordinance seven oh three on first reading.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Morris?
Yes.
Weir?
Yes.
Clements?
Yes.
Dewar?
Yes.
So moved on its first reading. Sixteen is ordinance seven oh four, amending provisions pertaining to section one seventy point thirteen, principal permitted uses, number one C, first reading. Now, in seven oh four, and this is, um, uh, actually Sandy and I had a conversation about it today. Again, this, this language is actually identical to R one. So this language is already in R one the way it states. Um, what she wanted to see happen, um, providing total number does not exceed two per building, um, what's that mean? What's, what's two mean? Two rooms, two people, two what, right? So she wanted to add, um, not to exceed two persons, our person, our people. Um, and I actually did send that over, uh, to our attorney this afternoon. And he said, you know, that would be, that would be fine if we did that. You know, again, you had to make sure that you're in line with chapter four fourteen of the Iowa code, so.
The reason I questioned that is, when the first time I read that language, I wasn't sure if the number two in that sentence was referring to two borders or two rooms. And so I just thought, if we're doing the change, we might as well make it as clear as crystal right now and not have to change it down the road because someone questioned what that meant.
With the two.
Or tried to take the wrong interpretation of it.
I think it should, yeah, absolutely be as crystal clear as you can make it.
Because the beginning of that sentence is talking about two borders, but also two rooms. Or.
Right.
It's talking about borders or rooms.
Right.
And so I thought, just by adding two words, we might save a lot of headaches.
Good idea.
So I would like to have a motion as amended, ordinance seven oh four, to read, providing total number does not exceed two people, or do prefer persons.
I would prefer two borders, because that's what we're talking about.
Okay, two borders, okay.
I, yeah, I was having the same thought.
More clarification.
Okay. Per building.
I would move, um, passage of ordinance seven oh four as amended on its first reading. Second.
Roll call, please.
Morris?
Yes.
Weir?
Yes.
Clements?
Yes.
Dewar?
Yes.
Excellent, so, um, both ordinances are approved on the first reading. Seventeen is Mayor Council reports. Um, I already kind of gave my good news during the TIF report, which I did send on to all of you. Hope all of you caught that because that's, that's a big deal for us. Um, we did apply for another grant for the wastewater treatment plant rehabilitation. Um, and they, we were denied even though, you know, they said that we had a high chance of getting it. They pretty much ran out of money. Because DNR is mandating this to almost every wastewater treatment plant in the state. So, um, it was nice. Um, our engineer, McClure Engineering, had looked into it. Initially, they thought they had to do the BABA, um, uh, approval, making sure that we were by American, what is it, by American, be American or by American? Do you know what the BABA is, stands for? Okay. Anyway, well, they came back and said, no, we did not have to do that because, you know, McClure said that's going to take some work for us to gather all those facts. And they came back and said, no, you didn't have to do that, um, that process and you're approved for the seven hundred thousand forgiveness loan.
Yeah, that's great because, I mean, that's that much less your financing.
Yeah.
Much less interest you're paying.
Yeah, and, you know, my first, my first indication, of course, you know, council would have to approve that either way. But my first indication, you know, I'd love not to have to continue to increase our sewer rates. You know, because that was, that was a big, that was a big hit to our residents this year. Including myself.
That's very impressive, um. The other thing, though, as far as I'm concerned, i- it's about time for the state to get off some of that money.
Yeah.
And invest back.
Right.
In the communities.
Right.
Everybody's struggling with infrastructure.
Yeah.
So.
Well, and the real, real whipped cream on top of the whole good news was when you add the interest factor in, it's saving over eight hundred and fifty-six thousand.
Eight hundred and fifty-six thousand.
Not just the seven hundred thousand, but the interest on top of that that will save.
Yeah.
So we're talking almost a million now.
Yeah. I know, I was really excited about it.
So.
Yep.
Council?
Nope.
I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thanks, guys and ladies.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Have a good night.
Have a good night.
You too.
Bye, chief.